This is the public hearing of the Committee of the Hold regarding Bills Number 170195, 170196, 170197, 170198, 170199, 170200, and 170213. Mr. Stitt, please read the titles of the bills and resolutions.
Bill Number 170195, in order to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2018 through 2023 inclusive. Bill Number 170196, in order to adopt a fiscal 2018 capital budget. Bill Number 170197, in order to adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2018. Bill Number 170198, in order to amending Chapter 19-1500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 170199, in order to amending Section 19-1801 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on real estate within the city of Philadelphia, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 170200, in order to amending Section 19-1806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on the use or occupancy of real estate within the School District of Philadelphia, under certain terms and conditions. Resolution Number 170213, resolution providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the city of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2018 through 2022, incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2017, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council approved by the mayor on January 3, 1992. Bill Number 1563-A, by in between the city and the authority.
Thank you. Today we continue the public hearing of the Committee of the Hold to consider the bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal year 2018, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal year 2018 through fiscal year 2023. As I stated earlier, we are here this afternoon to hear from you about the proposed budget and where you believe the city should focus its spending priorities. To ensure that there is an opportunity for everyone here to be heard this afternoon, certain ground rules have been established as follows. Number one, your testimony should be about the budget and proposed spending priorities. Copies are available in the table to my left where you signed in. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you've not done so, please do so now by signing your name on the list at the same table to my left. Your name will be called up in the order in which you signed. You will have up to three minutes to speak. In order to be fair, and because it is the fairest way to do it, we will stick faithfully to the three-minute limit. We have a timer that will be set to three minutes. When the timer buzzes, please complete your sentence and allow the next speaker to approach the microphone. I will ask Mr. Stitt to please read the name of our first speaker. Welcome. We're very happy to see you and have you, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this morning. I first want to take a moment to express on behalf of the members, staff, and Executive Board of the PFT how much our thoughts are with the C.W. Henry family. I had the opportunity to be there this morning when the children returned to school today, and I am happy to report that it was a very, very, very smooth, normal opening for the children. The principal and the staff did a tremendous job, and they are prepared to do everything they can to support the children. And there are a lot of support personnel present in order to provide counseling and other support for the children and staff at Henry. So I felt very confident when I left that today is going to be a great day for the children at the Henry School.
Thank you for letting us know and know that this council is ready to offer any support we possibly can.
Thank you. But the incident at C.W. Henry School serves as a reminder of how important it is for our schoolchildren to have access to counselors, nurses, and school staff that can guide them through the trauma of incidents like these. In previous years, I've come before you, and I've presented a laundry list of challenges facing Philly's students and educators. Unfortunately, this list hasn't significantly shortened, and there is one item that has grown into a huge distraction for our city's teachers and school staff. Today marks the 1,355th day without a new PFT contract. I know that Superintendent Height has publicly expressed his sense of urgency to arrive at a new tentative agreement as soon as possible. Unfortunately, our negotiations, while ongoing, remain very, very slow when it comes to any kind of progress. We have spoken many times about the lack of a new contract and how it's impacting on the morale of educators and driving out many of our educators from the district. Last week, we shared with you the results of a survey of PFT members about the impact of this unacceptably long period without a new contract. After five years without a raise, members find themselves unable to plan for the future. Many are working second jobs to make ends meet, and about half are actively looking for employment outside the district. And about 75% have indicated that their stagnant paychecks and increasing personal expenses have forced them to reduce their spending on classroom supplies for their students. This is a huge issue, and one that the PFT has been speaking on for the past several years. There is absolutely no way a Philly classroom can be adequately stocked on a mere $100 per year allotment provided by the district. And educators buy more than just school supplies for their students. Many buy food, clothing, and other essential items that their students are often lacking. City Council has done a great deal to increase public school funding at the local level, and we thank you. You have also been a tremendous ally as you've joined us in the call for a new PFT contract. Today, I ask that you continue to stand with Philly's educators in these efforts. For our part, we will continue to hold rallies, demonstrations, and other activities to call attention to this issue. Today, we are also delivering a petition signed by over 2,000 educators and community members to Mayor Kenny and Governor Wolf. The petition calls on these leaders to tell the district to put the $65 million in new annual revenue towards settling a new contract. Our members have dealt with five years of frozen salaries and growing instability. It's time to show Philly's educators the respect and appreciation they deserve. After five years without a raise, the right thing to do is to use the new revenue generated by the reassessment of real estate taxes to invest in the men and women who educate our children. We fully understand that deep fiscal concerns are at the root of many challenges facing our schools, and that is largely due to the state's inadequate and inequitable funding formula for public education. A report from the Education Law Center demonstrates that because of lower real estate values, poorer school districts in cities like Philly, Chester, and Redding have significantly less to spend on public schools than wealthier Pennsylvania districts. In 2014, a study by Power shows even deeper disparities when race is factored in. Districts that serve large minority populations receive less state funding than districts that serve mostly white students. Governor Wolf has made strides toward increasing Pennsylvania's public school spending, but without restoration of the nearly $1 billion in funding cut by the Corbett administration, it will be years before districts like Philadelphia see significant gains in funding. Until we can restore the lost funds or dramatically increase funding levels, Philly's children will never have the same access to art, music, clubs, athletics, and other programs and services available to students in our neighboring suburbs. The outlook for Philadelphia is even bleaker when you consider the charter, voucher, and anti-worker legislation being pushed by some legislators in Harrisburg. The PFT has been pushing for more funding and against anti-public education legislation, but we can't do it alone. We need city council to join us when we write letters and visit our Pennsylvania representatives and senators. We appreciate the decisions made by this body to bring more revenue to our schools, and hope that we can count on you to keep fighting alongside the PFT to give teachers and school employees the support, compensation, and respect that's been lacking for the past 1,355 days. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and certainly all of us in city council are looking forward to having a contract settled, and we have so many folks come down here, you know, have children of our own, our staff does as well, and so we are certainly 1,000% with you on trying to get a contract. Boy, those are many, many days, huh?
That's right. Thank you.
So you can count on that. Are there any questions or comments? Councilwoman Gamm?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you so much, President Jordan, for coming in here to present on this issue. One of the questions, in addition to helping us understand better the importance of the teacher's contract, and one of the things that I know we've worked on together is to highlight what happens when teachers don't have a contract. And a lot of that is not only based on just salaries and wages, but the fact that we're losing teachers by levels that we can't necessarily replenish. And I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit to the work that the PFT has done around addressing issues of teacher vacancies. We've been tracking them, obviously, but the importance and recognition that the contract is also contributing perhaps to the teacher vacancy situations. And also, in particular for us, a couple of things that we noticed is that in specialized fields in particular, so special education, speech and occupational therapy, we are really, really struggling to fill those positions without a contract because those are highly desirable specialized educators who have the opportunity to go elsewhere. And I was wondering if you could just help us talk through a little bit about how the impact has been on teacher staffing in schools.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The instability that is in the system as a result of the lack of a contract causes teachers who apply for positions to apply in other districts where there is some stability. People are not able to plan their lives, the lives of their family, and they really need to know. In Philadelphia, I have talked to a number of our young teachers who have said that they are not able to plan their families because of the lack of a contract and that their wages are stagnant. Philadelphia is certainly far behind many of the surrounding, about 67 surrounding school districts in the salaries. We have been for a while. However, by not having received any kind of wage increases for the last five years, and for the new teachers who are hired, when they come to Philadelphia, they are told that they will earn additional money according to the number of years that they serve in the school district. They get something called an increment. Year one salary, the year two salary is a little bit higher because of a small increase. Year three salary is a bit higher until they reach the maximum step, which is step 11. And for the last four years, those steps have been frozen as well, so the teachers are not getting those, and as a result, they're leaving. As you know, the majority of my membership are women, they're young women, and many of them have children. I don't have to tell any of you the expense of childcare and what that costs a family when they need to have put one or two or more children in childcare every month. And without being able to depend on step increases as well as wage increases, it's causing us to lose a lot of teachers. Teachers and other educators who are in what we call high-needs areas, such as math, science, world languages, speech pathologists, we are competing with the surrounding districts for those teachers. And I guess a couple of months ago, I saw a flyer announcing a recruitment drive that the suburban districts are having, they were having, and they were particularly going after being able to increase the number of minority teachers in their districts. And so they were coming, and they sent them into Philadelphia schools, to teachers, because they want our teachers. What I've been told by administrators who've left Philadelphia and have taken on superintendent's positions in other districts, what they say is that if you can get a teacher from Philadelphia, you've got a great teacher because Philly teachers know how to teach with very little, and they can make very little look like it's a lot, and they're very talented. So not only are we having trouble with recruiting teachers, we're having trouble with retaining them, and now the surrounding districts are recruiting the minority teachers, and we have a really low number of minority teachers in the Philadelphia School District now. And it certainly will not, this lack of a contract does not help in being able to attract minority teachers to come, much less stay.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate the work that the union has done to highlight the impact on teachers, and especially teachers who've had to take second jobs. I can't tell you the number of times that I've been out, just, you know, kind of living my own personal life, and come across a teacher who's either, you know, waiting at the table or working an extra job at a hardware store or all these other places, and it is really upsetting, and I think I speak for the majority of my council members who believe that the teachers in our city deserve a fair contract and that we'll be supporting that all the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Don?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and good morning.
Good morning.
I have some questions that you might not be able to answer, and I respect that. If you can't answer them, please don't answer, okay? You know, I looked up the definition of negotiation, okay? Because this has been going on for five years. And my understanding of negotiation is basically the bargaining, give-and-take process between two or more parties, each with its own aims and needs and viewpoints, seeking to discover common ground and reach an agreement to settle a matter of mutual concern or resolve a conflict. That's the definition of negotiation. In that context, I think that we started this process with one side on one end of the spectrum and another side on the other end of the spectrum. At the present time, are we much closer or are we still that distant apart?
I would say, Councilman, that, you know, I will answer it this way, that the Federation is prepared to settle the contract today. However, just as you said when you described the definition of negotiations, the district is the other player in this, and whether or not they're willing to take the, many of their demands off the table to make it happen, that I can't speak to.
And so I don't know the process that you're going through, but have we sought outside professional mediators to assist us in this process in order to get to the conclusion of a contract?
I don't know that we need outside mediators to do that. I think those of us who are at the table on both sides can do it. We've done it many times before, and it's just a matter of, as you said, it's two sides. One side can't get all that they want, and the other side can't either.
I'm just going to tell you, though, in the business world, I know it's different in the education world. If we had an argument or a negotiation that lasted five years, okay, at some point in time during that five-year period, we would have gone to a professional mediation service. In fact, the courts in Philadelphia send you to professional mediation before they even take you into court and to resolve a situation. I'm just suggesting it as a way to have the two parties come together and conclude because I can't imagine a new teacher wanting to teach in the city of Philadelphia with no contract for five years and no raises has to be extremely difficult to hire quality teachers in this environment.
You're absolutely correct, and it's not only difficulty in hiring new teachers, but it's, there's a big problem in retaining the current teachers that we have. Because they don't want to remain, they will go to another district where they are able to get, A, a higher salary, and B, know they have a contract and that they're going to get additional compensation.
And so you may not be able to answer this question, but I'm going to put it point-blank. For example, if five years ago, the school board or school district was offering $100 million, I'm picking these numbers out of the air, and the teachers were looking for $500 million, are today we're closer to the middle point or not?
Well, I really can't answer it because you can't cross the contract out until you cross all of the items, and as a result of it, we have a lot of big issues that are big-ticket items yet to be resolved.
One last question. Is the delta or difference between where the two sides are greater than $50 million?
I can't answer that because big-ticket items such as benefits and wages are unresolved. So until you can resolve those, I can't, you know, give you a cost.
So we don't know right now if the difference is $50 million or $100 million or $200 million?
No.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wish you, all of us wanted this thing to be resolved, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councilman Taubenberger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Jordan, thank you for coming this morning. Your input is, I think, very, very important for the process. I also want to thank you and your leadership team at the PFT for always caring about our children and putting them first, because I know in your actions and your words, and I've seen you many times in schools, that's the forefront of this, and that's what we, you know, need to do, and it's appreciated.
Thank you for your kind words, Councilman.
Your actions this morning, to be with the children that had this traumatic incident, is important. Didn't have to be there, but you were there. So noted. Do you have a sense of what the attrition rate actually is or approximately? We're losing teachers every year. We can't fill the slots because we're having difficulty attracting teachers. I mean, if you don't have a contract, many times, why would you go when you have all these other opportunities? But the actual attrition rate, do you have a sense of what that might be in a year's time?
About 30%.
That's significant.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
And it goes up to about 50% over five years.
Wow. These are things I think the public needs to know, and that's why I'm asking as well, so...
It's, yeah, it's very costly, and it's also costly to recruit because...
Correct.
...a city decides a Philadelphia, Philadelphia has to spend probably somewhere in the area of about $12,500 per teacher they recruit.
So it's actually costing us even more money because of the current situation?
Yes. When you look at large cities like Philadelphia, New York, Chicago, that's about the, and I think I'm on the low end...
Right.
...when, you know, quoting what the research shows regarding recruitment cost.
Mr. Jordan, thank you. Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and hello, it's good to see you.
Good morning.
I am reading your testimony, and I'm looking at your reference to the restoration of the nearly $1 billion in cuts that were made by the Corbett administration. And fortunately for me, I've, you know, had the great honor of working with you and teachers and legislators, you know, across our region, and advocating for funding. And while we were successful in some areas and getting through some battles, the war is still very difficult, and we know that one of the main highlights that Philadelphia suffered from the most during those cuts was the charter school reimbursement, and I'm not sure if you addressed this. Tell me, if you will, from your perspective, have we had any communication? And I know when you're advocating, you work with other teachers in other regions, and Philadelphia's not, although we're the largest, we're not the only district that charter school reimbursement could have been supportive. What is it like for other regions, and what's the tone in Harrisburg? Is that off the table from your perspective?
I have not heard anyone, when I say anyone, any of the elected officials talking about restoring the charter school reimbursement, which for Philadelphia, I think, was about $115 million, which is significant. And that, again, when talking about the $1 billion in cuts, that's part of what led to that number. And it certainly would help if we could get a charter school reimbursement, because Philadelphia has the largest number of charter schools in the Commonwealth, and there are a number of districts that are now really having some financial problems because of the expansion of the charter schools in their districts. And when that, as you know, Councilwoman, having worked in the legislature, when Governor Rendell proposed the charter school reimbursement, it was to help offset the expenses that school districts face as a result of the charter schools that they have.
I thank you, and I appreciate your response, and my hope is that we will find a way through the current negotiations to not make charter school reimbursement that line item a thing of the past, but that we will continue to put it in the forefront of our advocacy for the funding for public education while we're in Harrisburg. The next issue I wanted you to comment on, and you mentioned it briefly in response to two questions, was the issue regarding teacher recruitment and retention. And a major issue for me, particularly in the School District of Philadelphia, has been the presence of minority teachers, particularly African-American males. I've talked about this with the school district when they were in front of us last year. I think I mentioned it again this year. But am I correct in hearing you that the very few minority teachers that we have in the School District of Philadelphia are being heavily courted by our suburban partners or others in our region? Because if we're saying we need to bolster our efforts to recruit and retain more minority teachers, again, particularly African-American males, but now we are potentially losing them due to the heavy recruiting activity of those outside of our district, could you comment on that?
Yes. Our number of minority teachers has decreased, and, you know, there are just so many reasons as to why. Certainly, and you mentioned black males specifically, if you're a black male who is the head of a household, the starting salary for teachers is not that high. And then when a teacher has to spend the amount of money that our teachers have been spending out of their pockets to buy paper and other supplies for their classrooms as well as food and clothing for their children when they see that other children don't have or not getting enough to eat, you know, there are a number of teachers in a number of schools who... who know that when there is a three-day weekend, that they need to have extra food stuff on their desk so that the kids will be able to take it with them. Or when they come in on a Monday or Tuesday after a long weekend, they want to have food stuffed on their desk so that kids can just go up to the desk and take something because we don't know, you know, or we do know that many of them did not get enough food during that time. So that comes out of a teacher's pocket. And, you know, and then there are other, you know, just working conditions in general that really cause teachers to leave. You know, we're in a period now in this country that there are jobs that minorities, males particularly, could not, black males and black females could not get 40, 50 years ago. They are now available, and so people are leaving. And as the suburban districts are heavily recruiting minorities because they're looking for a diverse workforce, and so they come to Philadelphia, and they're offering, you know, more money and better working conditions. We're going to make sure you have books and paper and supplies and a better salary. So, you know, we are competing with the surrounding school districts.
Well, I just wanted to note for the record, and I know my time is up, and you actually addressed my third and final question, which was an issue surrounding teacher resources, and you talked about that. I want to thank the teachers in the school district of Philadelphia for their work. In addition to that, the resources that teachers spend out of pocket, you know, one, we used to have a store in Willow Grove Mall, and it is slipping my mind right now, but it was the teacher's store. It has since closed, and now we have to go across the bridge because I find myself with a four-year-old now. It's no longer, I see other teachers in there when I go, but I now have to go to those stores. And they're not being reimbursed for most of what they spent, and I just wanted to state that for the record. You know, I'm always looking for happy compromise. My hope is that, I know it's been five years, but I am confident that hammering at the table, your commitment, your leadership, along with that of the district, that we can get there. And so thank you also very much for what you do.
Thank you. We have to get there.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
I do have questions, really, just if you know the answer. Prior to the charter schools, I'm assuming that the number of PFT members was larger than it is today. Is that correct or incorrect?
That is correct.
And so I think there's about 88 charter schools, and are any of the charter school teachers members of the PFT?
No.
None?
None.
Okay.
There are, however, some charter school teachers who are members of our state affiliate.
Okay. So in the bargaining process now with the SRC or the school district, as you bargain, do you represent the teachers that are represented by the state union or just the teachers that are members of the PFT?
I just need to be clear on your reference to the state union. Do you mean the AFT Pennsylvania?
Yes.
Do I bargain for them?
Yeah, or do they bargain separately, or does nobody bargain for them?
They bargain separately.
Okay.
The PFT has nothing to do with the charter school teachers.
Okay.
The state handles that if they belong to the state organization.
And is it correct that generally the pay scale within Philadelphia is set by the salary that the public school teachers receive? Is that kind of a benchmark, or is that not true?
The salaries are negotiated.
Okay. So my question is, while the salaries are negotiated, for example, if the PFT members get higher pay, does that have kind of a domino effect of some sorts, or it just doesn't have any effect in the salary environment here in Philadelphia for the public schools, public charter schools, too?
I, Councilman, I can't speak
Okay.
To the salary structure for charter schools.
Okay.
I'm just not involved, and I'm not familiar with how they do it.
Yes, thank you. I just, I'm just trying to get some information. Over the five years, and I understand you're in negotiations now, but it has been five years. Is it, is it that, it must be that far of a divide between the school district and the PFT to have gone on for five years without reaching a contract? Is that correct, or is there something different than just very far apart on important issues?
Well, certainly, you know, you're not going to negotiate a contract without resources. And you certainly know the school district's resources, and there are, you know, other issues that are discussed in negotiations that are non-economic issues as well. So between the two, I mean, those are topics that are always discussed at negotiations and have to be resolved.
Is there any discussion about, under the work environment, a standard of equity in all public neighborhood schools? I understand there's magnet schools, and they have somewhat of a different set of standards, depending on what, whether it's music or academics, but in terms of just neighborhood schools, is there a discussion with the SRC about ensuring that all schools are equally resourced?
Are equally?
Resourced.
That is just an expectation. I mean, that I believe very strongly, and I'm the product of Philadelphia's neighborhood schools. I did not attend a magnet school. I went, I graduated from West Philadelphia High School, and it was very well-resourced when I was a student, and I believe that all of the neighborhood schools should be very well-resourced because children deserve it, and parents who send their children to the neighborhood school should, you know, get every opportunity for their children to get a good education in a neighborhood school. There should not be various tiers, in my opinion.
Well, I agree with you. My question is, does that get handled, like, between the SRC and some other place, or is that a point of negotiation with the PFT? Or is that something that the PFT in its negotiation does not focus on because it's focused on other things?
It's policy that is the responsibility of the School Reform Commission. They decide how they're going to resource buildings, and they decide what the curriculum is going to be. They have unilateral control of that.
Thank you very much. I will come back later.
And I think the state law grants them that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chairwoman.
Thank you. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, for your advocacy. Thank you for your support for the family at C.W. Henry for the unfortunate incident that occurred this week. And thank you for your advocacy as a leader for the Philadelphia Federation Teachers. And I think all members of this body are wishing and hoping for a quick resolution to your contract negotiations with the district. And looking at your testimony, and this is somewhat of a follow-up to the questions that Councilman Parker raised, and I noted that you referenced a report from the Education Law Center. And I'm curious from the perspective that, you know, many of us are waiting, are waiting with almost bated breath for the Supreme Court decision regarding the Education Law Center's lawsuit. And some of the things that Councilman Parker raised, and also you raised in your commentary, that a number of districts around the Commonwealth have been impacted significantly by the end of the charter school reimbursement. Rural districts, urban districts, all around the Commonwealth have been impacted in that regard. Although we don't know what the outcome may be for the lawsuit, many of us have some hopes of where it may go. Have there been any conversations with you and other similar leaders with other school districts around the Commonwealth about how to prepare for what that Supreme Court case decision may be? And also, any strategies if the Supreme Court says to the General Assembly, you know, you need to file the Fair Funding Formula under the Rendell administration or some other type of directive, how pressure can be put on the General Assembly to make sure dollars are directed back to both rural and urban school districts that can hopefully make up some of that lost money with the end of the charter school reimbursement?
I have not had a great deal of discussions with my colleagues in other districts, but what the PFT has been doing is that we've been working as a part of the coalition led by Power, and they have been doing some remarkable work. I do believe we'll be in Harrisburg around June 21st as a part of that coalition to push forward on that same issue. And I think that next week in Harrisburg, Senator Hughes, I think on the 23rd, is having a coalition in Harrisburg to discuss this issue of the lack of funding for our schools. And depending upon my calendar, I would like to be there.
Right. I know you're, you know, very focused on negotiating contracts. I just think that could be an opportunity. I am aware of the work that Power's been doing, especially with some of our southeast PA counterparts, you know, Montgomery, Chester, Delaware counties. But I also think that a number of the rural counties, and you made reference to this in your earlier testimony as well as Councilwoman Parker, that a number of rural counties are, have really been impacted significantly
Yes.
By charter school reimbursements being eliminated. Some of these jurisdictions have had homeschooling. So what happened in a local school district was not as much of an impact. But now, because of cyber charters, some of those same parents who were doing homeschooling are now doing cyber charter education for their children. They're also homeschooling, which is now having an impact on those rural school districts because those dollars are leaving that rural school district and going to that cyber charter. And it's a good possibility that cyber charter may be based in an urban area like a Philadelphia or Pittsburgh or Chester or Reading. So they're now having that impact. I just think there is an opportunity to bring a larger coalition. Too often in Harrisburg, it's stated as a Philadelphia issue, that charter schools are a Philadelphia issue in concern, and it's become more of a Commonwealth-wide issue. And I think, I think it does provide an opportunity for people to put pressure on our members in the House and Senate to look at this Fair Funding Formula issue, and based on how the outcome of the Supreme Court decision may occur, can galvanize people at a local level across the Commonwealth and say, we need fair funding for all schools in the Commonwealth, City of Philadelphia, Reading, Pike County, Lackawanna County, wherever. So hopefully, hopefully we have a speedy negotiation for your contracts and prior to the end of, prior to the decision being made, and we'll have an opportunity to develop that larger coalition to get people to think about this is not just an issue for some school districts, but this is an issue for all school districts.
Thank you. I hope so.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Dom?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. A couple of other questions I wanted to ask, Chair. And by the way, the school district, I think it was in last week or two weeks ago, I don't know if you saw, they mentioned in 2022, we could have a deficit of 700 million schools. They also mentioned that the pension fund was 50 million, contributed in 2011, if I recall, and today it's close to 255 million, up 500%. And it's going higher than that. So I don't know, I guess one of my points is I want to make sure that when we offer salaries to teachers, we also talk about the level of benefits that we offer. Because I noticed in the city, for example, when we offer for every dollar of wage in city government, we pay 87.7 cents in benefits. So example, and 37% overhead, when we offer a salary of 50,000, it's really 112. We offer a salary of 100, it's really 224. My only purpose in mentioning this is because I want to make sure we explain to any new hires that it's not just the salaries, also benefits that they're getting in that package that might be helpful.
No, I understand that, and certainly that's something that, you know, we have to deal with at the table because we have to cost in more than salaries. We cost in the benefits cost. You mentioned the pensions and the statement by the district about the amount that they have to pay, but I don't know if they told you that for 10 years, they didn't contribute to the pension fund at all. And that's why they're contributing the amount of money now because across the Commonwealth, school districts were given a pass while the educators continued to contribute the full amount to their pensions.
Okay. And on a different note, I visited last year 23 schools, and one of my concerns is how we talk about schools and the teachers and the principals. So I'll just give you my perspective. Because my perspective of the 23 schools that I visited, from Esquire Mitchell to Spring Garden Elementary to Rowan Elementary, Webster, Hancock, George Washington Girls' High, South Philly High, Francis Scott Key, West Philadelphia, Lincoln Edison, Kennerton, George Mead, just to name a few, every school I went into, I saw great teachers and I saw great principals. I didn't see one bad school out of 23. And I'm mentioning that because I think it's important that the media recognizes six issues a year of the school system that maybe aren't so great, and that's played up. But we forget about all the great teachers and principals that are in the system, doing a great job every day. And I went into these classrooms, these teachers are doing a good job. And I want to make sure we tell the public that because so many, especially young people, think they might have to move out of the city when their kids get to kindergarten, and they really don't. We have some really good schools. So just wanted to put that on the record and recognize.
I thank you for that, and you know what I know and have been saying for a long time. And I listened to the list of schools that you mentioned, they're neighborhood schools. And there are miracles happening every day in our neighborhood schools because the teachers are fantastic, we've got some great administrators, and they do a great job for the children, and the kids are getting a good education.
So, and I guess, I don't, what I feel we need to do, and I've told this to the school district, and I would mention it to you, too, is we need to talk more about the positives than the negatives. Because the positives that I saw far outweigh the negatives, far outweigh. And I don't think any parent should feel they need to move to the suburbs because of the schools. I think the schools that I visited in all areas were excellent. I didn't find one school that I wouldn't attend if I wasn't going into kindergarten. Last question I have, I wanted to see your position. I asked Dr. Height last week, financial literacy. You know, the Federal Reserve has a program where they'll teach teachers how to teach financial literacy. And I actually believe that the one way to take people out of generational poverty is to teach children from kindergarten to 12th grade, specifically kindergarten to 6th grade, financial literacy. How to save money, what is an interest rate, what is a mortgage, all those things that maybe we were taught by our parents. I'm not sure that's being taught in the school system today. How do you feel about committing to 10 schools next year, where we have each teacher kindergarten to 6th grade or 6th grade to 12th, whatever the school is, committing to teaching financial literacy?
I certainly am not opposed to it, without knowing what the program actually looks like. And, you know, certainly the material would have to be grade-appropriate because what you're going to teach a first grader is going to be very different from what you would teach a 6th grader. But it's something that young people need to learn because they will need those skills for their entire lives.
And just, so, you know, this is not something we're going to ask the city or the school district for the money to do the 10 schools. We're going to raise the money through private companies and charities to do this. I have commitments from several. I'm committed to doing four schools myself, so I just need the teachers and the school district to work with us.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
It does sound good. Councilwoman Ginn?
Chair, so I think we've talked a lot about how important the teacher's contract is to ensuring things that a lot of parents need. So a lot of us as parents often have felt that we don't have clear legal rights with the district, but the few rights that we do have are actually guaranteed to us through the teacher's contract. So for example, the question of a counselor and the importance of having full-time counselors in schools was in part coming out of the fact that that was guaranteed within the former PFT contract. We were able to win, thanks to your help and to a broad-ranging coalition of folks who've been pushing for a long time, the commitment to have nurses and counselors back into schools. We've been pushing on lower class size, ending leveling and split grades. But we're also particularly interested in counseling and behavioral and climate supports for high-need schools and to not have an enrollment-based approach towards how we staff our schools, but to how we staff our schools, but to also have, you know, like a baseline of enrollment, but on top of that to make sure it's needs-based and responsive. Has there been any discussion at all about making sure the teacher's contract goes into more depth about staffing levels and the kind of staffing that we want around counselors or behavioral support specialists in particular schools?
No, there has not been a discussion about that. The district believes that they will supply those services, and they know best. But I certainly would like to have specificity outlined in the contract in order to ensure it. And the reason I feel that it needs to be in the contract is because we've seen administrations come to Philadelphia, stay for four or five years and leave, and a new administration comes in with a different program. And it's the only way that we can ensure that the children and the schools will get certain services, is that if it's in the contract, then it will occur. You know, as I said in my remarks earlier, that the kind of services that the children at the Henry School are getting right now...
Should be available everywhere.
Exactly. I mean, we shouldn't have to do what the district is doing today. And I'm not criticizing it. I think the district has handled the Henry situation really perfectly. But that they're pulling psychologists from their regular duties to the Henry School. They're pulling counselors from other schools to the Henry School because you need those services there for those children. There's a need. But that we need to have more of them. We need to have some social workers in many of our schools in order to assist the children and the families.
You know, I think that that's one of the areas. I know that right now, the PFT and the district are working on, you know, finalizing the contract. But as we start to look forward, I am also interested in working with you and others to more deeply look at the PFT contract as a way of guaranteed staffing in schools. It's been particularly distressing as a parent to see that the maximum capacity for class size, for example, which is 30 in K to 2 or K to 3, and then 33 in 4 to 12, is not considered or looked at as a maximum, but is actually looked at as a standard, that teachers are distributed at the standard of. And if they happen to go over, there seems to be like very little consequence around that. So I'd love to figure that out. I think you'd have a lot of support from parents and others who want to see more behavioral specialists in our schools, especially in our high-need schools, guaranteed language access, librarians, nurses, more counselors in schools, not less. And particular guarantees about after-school and before-school care and programming, so.
Absolutely. Those are just so important. And they're important for the community. They're important, you know, you just touched on after-school care and before-school, particularly for working parents, to know that their child can be dropped off earlier, and they can go to work, and the child can stay later. And it really helps to save the parents from a childcare issue as well as cost. And it really is good for the child.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much as well. Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman. When I asked about equity in the schools, art in every school, music in every school, as opposed to art or music in some schools and not in other schools, that you told me was something within the policy or the purview of the SRC, not really a part of the PFT's labor contract negotiations or other things. It would seem to me that trying to deal with policy issues, accountability, transparency, and standards, such as ensuring a counselor or nurse in every school, is not something that the contract is ideally suited for, but rather a charter change. In other words, a charter change that reorients the duties and responsibilities of the school board and its administration. Are you aware of any bills that propose a charter change to the school district of Philadelphia?
I am only aware of the bill that you introduced a couple of years ago in this council.
Have you had a chance to review that bill?
I did. Then...
I'm not asking you for opinion. I understand you're in negotiations now.
I did then. I just don't remember all of the details.
To your knowledge, is there any other bill proposing a charter change?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so there's one. To your knowledge, one bill to change the governance structure of the school district of Philadelphia.
That I'm aware of, yes.
Okay. And I don't imagine there's too many other ways to change the governance structure, accountability, and transparency, other than a charter change. It's a thing that council can do. It has no effect unless the state legislature agrees, or the SRC agrees, for example. It basically, however, does lay out a plan, a methodology to providing equity in education in a more guaranteed method, I would say. That's my opinion. I'm not asking for a response, not trying to put you in a tough situation. But I will put you in a tough...
I'm accustomed to them, so it's okay.
Okay. The SRC, as you negotiate this contract, I did hear about teacher reimbursement. I have a great interest into that. I did introduce a bill. It is in committee. What would the amount be, do you think, if you can tell me, regarding your expectation for teachers to be reimbursed under your contract with the SRC?
Currently, there is a $100 per teacher reimbursement for supplies that, for money that teachers spend for supplies and other things for the classroom. My conversations with a number of members, I have heard teachers, for the most part, run the gamut, and it depends upon what they're teaching, from about $300 up to, I remember clearly having a good conversation with the art teacher at Girls High, who spends $5,000 because he's buying art supplies, and they're not cheap. And he wants to make sure that the girls have everything that they need in order to do the artwork. And certainly, the paper that he buys, or I'm calling it paper, but it's posters, I'm sure, that's just a lot more expensive than the different kinds of tools that you need in order to do an effective art lesson in a high school.
Is the SRC willing to reimburse teachers up to $5,000?
No.
I introduced a bill that would create a teachers reimbursement fund that would reimburse teachers up to $5,000. And that bill is in committee. Do you support that bill or not?
I haven't read the bill. I do know that some of our teachers came and they did testify during the hearing. And certainly, I agree that there needs to be an increase in the reimbursement for supplies for teachers. Beyond a doubt, there needs to be.
Chairwoman, if I could make a final point, I know the bell has rung. The administration does oppose the teachers fund at this point in time. They would prefer that it be incorporated into the fund for Philadelphia schools.
Which administration are you referring to, the city or the district?
Oh, I'm sorry, the city administration, Office of Education or something. I'm sorry, I don't mean like something. I should know the title, but it just escapes me for a second. My disagreement with them is that the fund for Philadelphia schools funds many things. And as we look at the impending deficit of the SRC, $700 million that has to be dealt with, they have not, up until now, made teacher reimbursement a issue or a priority. And I don't know that if they run into other priorities that will remain important to them. Second of all, I don't think they're anywhere near the numbers that you just talked about in the testimony that I received from a teacher who spent $3,000 of her own money. And so I do think that we should have a teachers reimbursement fund that could be funded by private corporations, state government, or any other methodology which has a board of former teachers to make those decisions. And I would ask you to please take a look at that legislation. We did receive very favorable testimony from the retired teachers, president, former president, and other teachers themselves. I would hope that no teacher would have to spend their own money for fundamental and necessary school supplies. But in reality, they do. And I would like to ensure that we at least try to create some system outside of the current SRC, which we can ensure that there's money to reimburse teachers. In addition, it would not be subject to maintenance of effort, which is problematic whenever we give money to the SRC to give to the teachers. We can have a separate fund. But please look at that. I would love to have that discussion with you.
I will do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you very much. If there are no further questions, we can move on with our folks who are here, who have been here this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Will the clerk read the title of the next speaker?
Professor Aaron Levinson, Amy Edelstein, and Tamika Anglin.
Thank you for being here. I assume that Professor Levinson is not here. All right, neither of you look like an Aaron, so I assume that. All right, Amy Edelstein or Edelstein?
Stein. Thank you so much. It's a privilege to be here, and I appreciate all the hard work being done on our education system.
Thank you.
My name is Amy Edelstein, and I'm the founder and director of the Inner Strength Teen Mindfulness Program. And I'm here to encourage you to fully support the budget initiatives that improve climate, college and career readiness, using mindfulness, and other restorative practices. I don't need to explain to everyone here that too many of our kids are suffering from stress, trauma, and anxiety. Systemic challenges of poverty impact our students, making it difficult even for very dedicated and motivated students to focus on learning. Achievement-oriented anxiety across all socioeconomic brackets is causing issues of self-harm, behavioral breakdown, and even tragically suicide. Unregulated stress and anger often erupt in classroom multinations, hallroom multiations, leading to a loss of learning time and bad choices that can affect a child's entire future. Teachers and staff also suffer from this kind of stress. What I'm here to explain is that there are cost-effective ways to turn this around. Mindfulness is rapidly becoming one of the preferred go-to tools to help kids self-regulate and calm. Objective reports and analysis, as well as self-assessment studies, show that mindfulness does improve school climate, cultivate leadership, and most especially, it trains students with the all-important 21st century skills of systemic and flexible and integrated thinking. We don't know what our future is, and we need kids who are able to deal with complex factors. The school district needs methods that visibly improve school climate and academic outcomes, and that support without burdening a school's counseling staff. The students also need and want methods for de-escalation that they can use with their peers and that they can use on their own. Well-structured in-school mindfulness training provides time-honored and evidence-based tools that students pick up easily. I've seen the most difficult kids choose to de-escalate and self-regulate after being introduced to mindfulness. I've had teachers from South Philly, a community school, to Mastermen, one of our best magnet schools, say how much their kids have calmed down and how much easier it is for them to focus on the joy of learning. I'm here to recommend that we allocate funding within each of the budgets of Education, Community Schools, and Department of Behavioral Health for mindfulness and social-emotional learning tools. I want to see them available not only to the 2,000 students that I'm reaching across nine schools, but to all Philadelphia students across the city. The well-being of our kids, our teachers, and our administrators depend on real systemic change, and we all will benefit from the full flowering of the next generation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Tamika Anglin. I have attended multiple SRC meetings. I have listened to the school district's testimony to city council. On many occasions, I have heard the district go on about their investments and their priorities. It seems the district has so many priorities that at some point, a priority becomes the last priority in a long list of priorities. What happens to a priority deferred? As I borrow a couple of lines from Langston Hughes, "Does it stink like rotten meat, or maybe it just sags like a heavy load?" We know that many of these priorities are languishing incomplete. It seems that contracts are a priority. There are multiple contracts with Relay Graduate School of Education to train up the next principals and teachers in this district. However, Relay was denied accreditation in Pennsylvania. The application, which was initially submitted in 2014, was ultimately denied in 2016. The application was denied because there are not enough adequate number of qualified administrators or faculty to oversee operations in Pennsylvania, and the library resources are only online. They don't even require textbooks for their coursework. Speaking of libraries, the school district currently has only six staffed and operational libraries out of 218 district schools. That number will be reduced by one in the upcoming year. The district has contracted with Relay since 2015 to train principals through its National Principals Academy Fellowship. There will be 18 leaders this year to the tune of $318,000. It makes sense that a school that does not see the value in physical books and libraries would train up a cohort of leaders that don't place a high value in libraries within their schools. Moreover, Relay will pilot a teacher residency program for $150,000 this year for 20 teachers. There is also a contract with Children's Literacy Initiative to the tune of $15 million. For $15 million, CLI will provide early literacy specialists that have thorough knowledge of standards, current curriculum frameworks, and literacy development. These early literacy specialists will also be able to differentiate instructional practices. And there are other things which all sound like the abilities that a teacher in the classroom already should have. None of these priorities should take precedence over the ratification of a fair contract for our teachers. Please assist the school district in getting the teachers a fair contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for her? The former witness left, but we also have a copy of her testimony in case there are questions.
I didn't so much have a question, but just wanted to express thanks to Parents United for keeping with it, paying attention to budgets. I think this is the hardest thing that a lot of parents have, you know, it's hard... I think this is the hardest thing that a lot of parents have, uh, you know, it's hard to look at all these numbers on a spreadsheet and try to understand them and then try to understand what they mean to our young people. In particular, I want to thank you, Ms. Anglin, for pointing out the Relay contract. I think there are a lot of pro, of questions about a contract with an entity that was denied certification by the State Department of Education and that the school district then picks up on its own, brings in, and, um, has not had a proven track record of success. So I thank you, as always, for valuing, um, and promoting, uh, our kids' education first, but also making it clear that parents are working and paying attention to the budget and to contracts because it's taking away, these choices take away, so. I didn't know if you had any other. Thank you.
Thank you again very much. We'll ask the clerk to read the names of the next, uh, individuals.
Anne Marie Hindman, Danielle Campbell, and Dr. Carlos Moore.
Oh, wait, you have two names? One more name?
Carl Moore.
Carl Moore.
All right, he stepped out, so we'll call a witness, another witness.
William Jackson.
Mr. William Jackson.
Um, Maria Ortiz.
Ms. Ortiz, are you here?
Yes, I'm going to go to Tiffany Green.
Oh, all three, okay, they won't want to go together. So, Betty Buford, oh, okay. Kendra Brooks? Okay.
All right, uh, good afternoon. Thank you for being here and please begin your testimony.
Thank you very much. Good morning, my name is Anne Marie Hindman and I am an associate professor of early childhood education and educational psychology at Temple University's College of Education here in Philadelphia. I also coordinate Temple's Early Childhood and Elementary Teacher Preparation Program, which we're proud to call the single largest provider of teachers for the school district of Philadelphia. It's from this perspective that I would like to offer two points in support of Philadelphia's recent initiative to provide widely available, high-quality pre-kindergarten to our city's residents. First, Philadelphia's children in schools need high-quality pre-K. There is no doubt that children are most successful in school when they enter kindergarten ready to learn to read and to build skills in math and science. But for many of Philadelphia's youngest residents, including the estimated one in three who live at or below the federal poverty line, the first years of life do not necessarily offer access to the very specific kinds of knowledge of letters, of numbers, of vocabulary words, uh, that their kindergarten teachers will expect them to bring to the very first day of school. For all children, but especially for children growing up in poverty, experiencing one or two years of high-quality preschool can lay the critical foundations of knowledge and behavior that they will need to be successful down the road. Second, Philadelphia is uniquely well-positioned to ensure that high-quality pre-K is achieved. The positive effects of preschool depend on the quality of the programming that children's receive. Unfortunately, evidence from large-scale studies, including my own research, shows that on average... Sure, thank you. Uh, unfortunately, evidence from large-scale studies, including my own research, shows that on average, pre-K classrooms in the United States offer instruction of low to low moderate quality and that children in poverty have the least access to quality, although they need it the most. Certainly, a lot of factors figure into quality, but if I had to choose one that was most important, I would say that high-quality pre-K teachers know how to talk with and not just at young children, and they know what to talk about. Even for the most gifted of teachers, engaging each of 16 or more young children in a classroom every day in this way can be an enormous challenge. One of the primary solutions to this challenge is training teachers to use several evidence-based practices. Teachers need to learn to ask children questions, wait for their responses, and then offer feedback that continues the conversation. This training often takes time and requires a lot of guided practice. Philadelphia is home to a number of higher education institutions, including Temple's College of Education, that can support this kind of essential training. Together, we can realize the promise of high-quality pre-kindergarten for the city and ensure that, no matter their zip code, children enter kindergarten ready to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, my name is Danielle Campbell and I'm a parent of four, three of whom currently attend the J Cook School. Um, as a concerned and involved parent, I'm here today to speak about a disservice that our school district has let go unattended for far too long. During my attendance of the 2017 Parent Summit at St. Joseph's University, I was able to sit in on a breakout session entitled "From Philly to Flint: Understanding the Conditions in Our Schools." And while I sat there, I saw images that you would assume were from the set of some modern-day horror movie. The horrifying thing about it is that this is where some of our children are being forced to do what statistics and the Board of Education and the School Reform Commission would like to call "learning," but how can you learn if you have a headache from the asbestos you've been inhaling on account of that crumbling wall in the corner of the classroom with the leaky pipe that's been leaking for literally years? How can you learn when you saw one of your classmates have an asthma attack and she simply never returned to the classroom where the paint is peeling so badly that it flutters through the children's hair like leaves? How could anyone learn? I saw deplorable conditions and heard stories of one very unfortunate death and near deaths that were a direct cause of the unspeakable conditions that these children are being forced to learn in, that these teachers and administrators are being forced to work in, and no one is being held accountable. Although the funding is there on paper, we're seeing no changes in the actual buildings. These children and those who work to educate them deserve to be able to function in a safe and healthy environment. It is as simple as that. And as a parent of students at J Cook, one of my biggest concerns is lack of safety and security. The city of Philadelphia has hundreds of surveillance cameras operational throughout the city. Why are so few of them in places of education that can also become places of violence and unfavorable behavior? The bullying epidemic has reached ridiculous proportions and is unfortunately resulting in suicide in some cases. When I heard about the 10-year-old boy who hung himself, I cried as if he were one of my own. When will enough be enough? There should be surveillance cameras throughout every school in the Philadelphia School District, and these buildings would not be able to stay in operation, putting young lives at risk with unacceptable maintenance conditions if there were cameras in every school. Nothing would go unnoticed, bullies would be held accountable, just as any school reform administrators who were too busy misappropriating funds to see the dangers our children are facing every day would also be held accountable for their actions or lack thereof, once there are cameras in every school.
Thank you. Yes, your remarks were very important, and we're happy to check on any schools you can, you choose to name now or privately. We also have members, uh, Evelyn Sample Oates is behind us. She's, would be happy to check into and to report to the superintendent for whom she works, any specific schools.
J Cook, I was, I'm sorry, J Cook is where my children attend and the level of incidents is concerning.
All right, so feel free. Evelyn, would you raise your hand? That look behind you, and she'll report any specific incidents to the superintendent. She does an excellent job. Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Kendra Brooks?
And thank you for coming in and having the courage to do so.
Okay, hi. Um, so I had something prepared, but I'm gonna kind of...
Identify yourself.
Kendra Brooks. My name is Kendra Brooks. I'm with Parents United for Public Education.
Thank you.
Um, so I had something prepared, but everyone has spoke on pretty much this issue that I had. So I'm gonna kind of switch gears to trauma, um, and who's protecting our future. So as I sat and listened to all the various testimonies of all the things that are true and dear to me, building conditions, I had notes on that. Mindfulness and restorative practice and restorative justice, notes on that. The importance of preschool, importance of that, I'm kind of traumatized, um, myself. So I wanted, you know, kind of reflected back to how is that affecting our children? You know, knowing that the buildings are in poor conditions, which is, um, directly affecting their health and their ability to learn, knowing that our teachers are being exposed to dangerous conditions, which is directly affecting their health and their ability to teach, knowing that, um, bullying is an epidemic and school climate is so poor and we don't have enough counselors and all these things that are happening, you know, what are we gonna do to protect our common good? You know, so a lot of it goes to the district, but I want to kind of reach out to the city in general. Like, what kind of initiatives can we put together to ensure that our kids are safe? And safety not just includes in the building, because when the kids go home and commit suicide, it trickles into our, outside of our school. I think of when we call, I'm, I'm boots on the ground in the school every day. My kids attend Edward T. Still, High School of the Future, and Amy Northwest. And I think about when we have to call police into the building for support, the first thing they said, "Our children are bad," or "The parents don't know better," and all these issues. Um, and that's traumatic as well, because I'm a parent, I'm in the school every day. My children aren't bad. Of course, all children misbehave, but if we're constantly telling our kids that they're bad and they're no good and they're not worthy of healthy water and decent buildings and all these things, that's trauma. So what can we do to help support not the district only, but also, you know, police enforcement, law enforcement, all these things, to be sure that we're supporting the common good for our future? Our children are at risk here. And if we don't step in to be able to support initiatives to be sure that, you know, things aren't getting better for them, we're losing. You know, so I'm of great concern with that. You know, I went to help support J Cook last year and their fight to remain a public school. Still School was on the list to provide, to remain a public school. So as parents, we support education, but I think we have the right to speak up and say that this is not good enough. The status quo is not good enough. Our children make a difference. You know, and from us being in the buildings and seeing what's going on firsthand, you know, us sitting here at these tables and at the SRC, it's almost like a cry for help. So the same voices that say that parents don't care, we need to reach out to parents that do care and come up with some solutions that include parents into the space. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very important. Councilman Dom just about, Reese, just a half hour ago maybe, talked about how schools are good and he found good teachers, good principals. You're, all of you, um, have talked about the fact that we have good, uh, parents and that we care and we need mindfulness and, and, uh, you know, it makes you wonder why we have all these problems. We all have to survive in society and, uh, and why, uh, I hear issues about children not being prepared. If we have, if, because if everybody cares, we shouldn't have the problems, uh, that we have with our youngsters. Youngsters, God created most, uh, uh, children with the same level of intelligence. You, you always have some much brighter, you may have a few geniuses and a few who are disabled or slower. And, uh, so why do we have these issues then? There has to be a way to correct the issues that our children are suffering with. And I certainly thank all of you for coming in to try to make that happen. Thank you. Any questions for them? Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Gamm?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, first of all, thank you all very much for your, uh, tremendous testimony, especially Ms. Brooks, for testifying earlier about, uh, personal experiences that you've had. And one of the things that we're trying to do is, is understand better how to push more of these resources into our schools to address trauma and behavioral supports, climate, and recognize that those aren't extras or they're not for bad behavior kids. It's because they're the anchors of how we help children feel safe, assured in school, and how they can then learn. Um, I had a couple of questions for Ms. Campbell. Hello, yeah. Thank you. Um, so, Cook is a turnaround school, is that right?
I'm sorry.
Uh, Cook has been designated one of the district's turnaround schools.
Yes.
And I know that you've been an extremely active parent at that school and I thank you for that. But could you talk to me a little bit about what the district's outreach to parents has been for, through the turnaround process? Like, what have you been told? What additional resources are you getting? Did you have any direction in terms of the discussion about resources? The district is spending 250-some million dollars on maintenance and capital repairs in the coming year. Is Cook on the list? Do you even know if they're on the list? Or would you even know, like, how to find that out, for example?
Um, I do not know the answer to that question in terms of Cook being on the list. Parents have been kept very much in the dark, um, since we were able to, um, be taken off of the chopping block. We weren't sold to Great Oaks, um, but with having a new principal and a lot of new staff, um, parents have been pretty shut out this year. I know that you, and thank you, um, very much, um, for your aid in helping us to get, um, updated water systems throughout the school, like water fountains that are totally new, so that was definitely a big help. Other than that, that's like the only improvement that I've seen personally in this school because we're not pretty much allowed past the office. It's, the building is kind of, um, locked down, but there have definitely been some major security concerns with incidents of violence in school, after school, incidents with teachers being injured, um, and none of this...
This year? You've had those incidents happen in this school year?
Yes, at J Cook, yes. Um, and, and, and a lot of it is unreported. We actually had, um, last week, there was allegedly a child on the premises, an 18-year-old in the building, looking for one of our eighth graders who had got jumped, um, last Thursday. So there were other kids that were illegally let into our building that were able to jump this eighth grader in our yard, on school property, but these were kids that didn't even attend our school, that had been let into the building. So the security concerns, um, are definitely an issue right now because there's just not enough supervision, period. We have like two security guards, one's kind of an older gentleman, the other one's, um, it's, we definitely need assistance in terms of, um, security and maintenance, and I think surveillance cameras would, um, definitely play a big part in alleviating some of the concerns. And with Cook being a magnet school, we have autistic support kids there. I have a 10-year-old who's autistic. Um, we don't know what happens in the autistic support classrooms. We aren't able to see how our children are being handled, um, or perhaps mishandled when we're not, you know, present. Um, the autistic support, of course, they, they need more support in terms of teachers who are qualified, the class size is enormous, um, and then just physically, there's no, I, I would, I would be more comfortable if there were cameras so I would know how my son is being dealt with throughout the day.
So, just out of curiosity, um, I know you're an active parent and I know that Cook had a home and school association. Separate from the home and school association, separate from like parent meetings that you just go to and like, you know, uh, the report cards. What has the district done, um, to make sure that parents are engaged with a turnaround vision for Cook? How many meetings have you been made aware of by the district, holding a meeting with parents so you can air some of your questions and concerns, um, as this turnaround process moves forward for your school?
Since September, none, to my knowledge.
Okay, so you felt like there have been no meetings at all that the district has helped organize as communication with parents about the turnaround process, where parents can like have some level of discussion about visioning for the school?
Not at all. The most information that I've gathered and have been able to share was at the 2017 Parent Summit, um, hosted by Parents United for Public Education. Um, a lot of parents that attended had an opportunity to exchange information with one another and get information about what's happening with our schools inside and outside.
Have you had any meetings with, uh, Superintendent Bakotes coming in at all to talk to parents about the turnaround process or inform them since all the stuff happened last year?
No, ma'am.
So he's had no meetings with parents or community members?
Not to my knowledge at all, no.
And then, um, is, do you feel like you have a sense of what the turnaround vision is for Cook based on the district's perspective? The district will say that it's spending a significant amount more money into Cook than it is in other schools, for example, but do you feel like you have voice or any input into how that money is spent?
Not at all.
Okay. Thank you very much, and we'd love to be able to work with you on that.
Okay, I look forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your excellent testimony. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. We'll ask the clerk to read the additional individuals who are here.
Dr. Carlos Moore, Kathy Fisher, Julie Krug, and Orlando Acosta. They'll go after you. Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, the next group, we'll call you all together.
Yeah.
That's why we called Dr. Moore. He's been here early, came to my office, about nine something. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your patience and thank you for staying.
Yes.
Dr. Moore, thank you. We appreciate your interest in education and that you will come out and speak for our children.
Thank you very much, Councilperson Blackwell. And thank you to the other councilperson, who I know of her reputation when she was with the student union with my sister-in-law. Such as other city councilmen personnel who don't want to hear my truth, I'm not going to say it today.
Identify yourself at the record. Let me note, Mark Squillo is here as well. He had to step outside, but identify yourself at the record.
Okay. Can you get in? No problem, brother. Okay?
Yes.
My name is Carl, Dr. Carlos Moore, PhD graduate from the University of Pennsylvania. I've been coming to the city council since 2011. I've been talking about Dr. Height and the kind of person he is. I had friends in Rollins when he came from Prince George County. I told the city council back in 2011 that what Dr. Height was made of. I told them the institutions that he was about the business of. And I told the city council in 2011 that Dr. Height was about the business of changing public schools to charter schools. I told him about all the different things he had did down in Prince George County, Maryland. I expressed to the city council about his bookkeeper, whatever you want to call him, who was subpoenaed and who's made a recommendation, which in other words, he was stealing. Dr. Height brought him here. Dr. Height in 2011 told the city council that once he closed down these schools, that everything was to be financially all right with the school system. I told the city council back then that it's a lie. Everything I've been telling the city council for all these many years has became true. It's a lie. Dr. Height closed the schools down, and every time you get a school where you have up the parlor that they're reading on, he turns them into charter schools. Dr. Height turned around and took thirty-five million dollars to go hunt for teachers. That's a slap in your face to the citizens of Philadelphia. Thirty-five million dollars. I know people who has corporations that own. You mean tell me you got an HR department that you can't go out there, put ads, a baby that brings teachers on in? No, it was his buddies. The same buddy that he testified for in Chicago that's being indicted for thievery. But you constantly keep on going on. I told you in 2011 that city, you know, Dr. Height thinks the city council ain't shit. And he does it. He tells you lies. He told you last, two years ago, that he was a sever the school contract. He ain't did nothing. His job is to bust the union. And the city, the citizens of Philadelphia must recognize it. The city of Philadelphia citizens gave city council a mandate. You put it on the voting thing there to shut down that particular system which you're part of. You did nothing. You members in city council listening up there in your room and sit back and say, "Well, it's against the law." You have the law. You make the law. You study the law. You know how to manipulate the law. If not, I'm good at manipulating the law. Okay? This man, citizens of Philadelphia, says, "Shut him down or come and leave our control." This man is constantly, constantly, it's gotten to the point now where it's back there, Councilperson Janie Blackwell, the person you taught in school. My niece, she became a teacher. She's so-called now, she left this system here to go out there in Montgomery County to work. My brother-in-law, he left this system to go out there in Montgomery County. My two grandchildren, like teachers, they're out there in Delaware County. Well, what the union rep was saying about these counties are trying to block teachers, they're not telling a lie. They grabbed up all my nieces and nephews. What I'm saying to you is, they're my grandchildren. I got grandchildren, grandchildren going into the system. You, as a council, have did nothing but sit down here and give rhetoric. You won't give me a lie. I'll tell you what, here's my mandate. If city council don't see to it, this contract is not signed within thirty days, look at your job. Hear me out very well. I got nine pieces of property down in the Fairmount section, which I bought in 1975 and I quickly renovated them. Each one of the properties is at least worth three hundred, maybe four hundred thousand dollars. I will sell. And all you people who sit on your ass in your office right now, who's down there, listen to me, you will be gone. Because being seventy-four years old, I talk to the senior citizens and try to do something, get rid of them. You gonna allow this man to jerk us around? It's a joke. What are we, jokers? It's a joke. What are you going to do? Nothing. One councilman there, I can give you a set of balls so that you can stand up, and any other white man, black man sitting in there. It's over, I'm tired of it. I've been coming here since 2011. Hey, young lady there, you, I know you're a fighter. I seen you fight back in the day. And you gotta go, she's a good person to follow. Hey, but the rest of them, they sit back and ask intelligent questions. Intelligence is over. Action is renowned. And I wonder, what is the city council going to do? Every year I come down here, it's the same old story. Aren't y'all tired of me? Well, this time, I'm coming back. Remember, we used to have the city controller. He's gone. Okay? I know the tricks of the game. I've been involved in politics for fifty years. I've been down this, this theater right here for twenty years. I know the street game. I got grandkids. I'm the one, I'm getting ready to graduate from Drexel. He is computer science. I got other ones, masters in computer science. They email and all this other stuff. Hey, I'm gonna make them pay me by emailing, doing every damn trick in the computer game to get rid of you. Hey, Dr. Height is a joke. He works for a man that has a Pacific island. He has a island out there in the Pacific. His main goal when he came here, the other superintendent prior to this told me this. When she told me that there was a shutdown of schools, I thought it was a joke. They did it. I came here pulling against it. And everybody looked at me, asked, "He told you a lie. He told you, well, we need more money, or, or, or we need more." I said, "You was three hundred million dollars in debt back then. Now you got cigarette money, everybody's money and all stuff like that now." Now, you mean to tell me he can't settle the contract? No. He's gonna take more money. He gonna bring in more people. That's thirty-five million dollars. What happened to the thirty-five million dollars? Do we hire teachers? No. You're a joke. And all you city councilmembers sitting in your chambers right now, you're a big joke. But I'll tell you what, I'm seventy-four. When it comes time to run, run again, and councilperson, you know, I'm a man of my word. I will put more money on the damn street to get rid of your sorry asses than nothing in the world. That man still gonna be there over there on Broad Street? Hey, you can get rid of him. It's against the law, because the state, hey, back then, we was talking back then, it was a Republican governor. Now you gotta be a block, no, you have to be a Democratic governor. Hey, we need to go up there and tell Harris' word, hey, give us back our school. Give us back our schools, let us run our own school system. It's a joke. It's just like the parkland, it's a joke. The Republicans run it, steal it, and steal all our money. Can't you understand it now? We got an asshole president and we got a bunch of Republicans running around. I'm a disabled veteran. Hey, you mean to tell me I did all this fighting for nothing? To come back here to watch my grandkids suffer? My grandkids, they moving out of the city. They live in Delaware County, Montgomery County and all. It's a shame. And I tried to stay here in Philadelphia. I spent four hundred thousand dollars, my own personal money within the neighborhood Thirty-Eighth and Girard, to buy back the land and put land in there. I don't rent it out. I put it right in there where my grandkids, my other kids' blood can move into the area. The Fairmount section, yes, I got rich off of that. I'm gonna take that money, I'm gonna shove it up your, you want to, hear me, councilman? Okay? You from South Philly. I used to work with a predator, a person who was a bank whizzo. I'm a man of my word. I'm gonna shove it up your ass. And that's it, councilman. I gotta go now.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and thank you for waiting so long. All righty.
But that's left up to you, Council. You do it, young lady. You got a boss like me. And you got an angel like her to with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Who's going to go next? That's up to you. It's up to you who goes next. All right, Mr. Acosta, she said you could go next.
Okay. Um, hi, Councilwoman.
Fine, thank you. Identify yourself. Thank you.
My name is Orlando Acosta. I'm very, very upset, because like the gentleman just said, we, we've all been coming up here numerous times. And no matter what you hear from anybody in this room about the school district, it's like a revolving, repeating conversation about resources in the schools, teachers not being in classrooms, losing teachers. When is it going to come down that we get quality schools? When does it come down to the aspect of quality schools and resources and real sustainable things that kids can be successful? Because we can't say to a child, "You, you have to be successful. You have to strive for success," if they don't have the resources to strive for success. Like he said, how, how long has Dr. Height been here? He's been here about, what, six years, five years, something like that? And I don't see any difference in the schools. We have, you know, kids at Health and Science, a quality principal that they're pushing out the door for no reason whatsoever. They're pushing him out the door for no reason whatsoever. So he has a high graduation rate in that area, in that school, on a regular basis. And when they bringing in the new principal, they're not contacting all the parents, because I wasn't involved in that conversation. I wasn't reached out to in the new aspect of the principal. But, but you talking about transparency of parents and being involved, because if parents are gonna be involved with their school, they should be involved with the budget of their school. When they, when, when the budgets come down to each school, that goes out to each school, they should be involved in the process, not certain parents, like one or two parents that's picked out by the district and then they want to bring certain, or picked out by the school, that want to bring the parents down along with the administrator. That's not how transparency works. Transparency is, you reach out to all the parents within that school, because Kids at Health and Science has over four hundred and fifty kids in that school, and only, what, two parents, two or one parent was reached out to along with the rest of the administrators to, to, along with the YUC, that was, that was in the process of reaching out to the, the, you know, pick the principal or evaluate the principals for the position that they're gonna overtake for Mr. Williams. Now, and then the process is too, that if you're gonna pick out a principal, shouldn't you know the qualification? So the systemic aspect of school doesn't change dramatically where you know that if he has a culture of success, then you have to know what the culture of that new principal is coming in from a larger range of perspective, from all the parents that, that have them children go into that particular school, or every school, no matter what, whether or not you bring a principal in for every school or just that one school. But the point is that, that I'm trying to say is, the transparency still is not within the school district when you make critical decisions on budgets or principals, how principals come in into a school or how they go out to a school. And, 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 you know, the district is going, is making moves without parents' input at all. I mean, we have tax dollars that we pay, but it doesn't look like it's transparency for people paying tax dollars to, to the city and having input. And I mean, why do we have to go out and get teachers when we have qualified teachers right here in the city, but we gonna spend thirty-five million dollars to go outside of Philadelphia to look for quality teachers? That, that's not economically sound spending. I mean, we have to make common sense out of all of this. I mean, you know, how, how can we teach success if we not being successful? We the eighth largest school district in the country. In the country. And we're filling our children every single day. And it just doesn't make any sense at all, and it has to stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Acosta.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy Fisher, and I'm the Policy Director at the Greater Philadelphia Coalition Against Hunger. Thank you for the opportunity.
Excuse me one moment. Did you want to ask Mr. Acosta a question?
Yes, I didn't know if he had to leave or anything like that, and so I know that.
Sorry, thank you.
No, thank you, Councilwoman.
Yeah, no, I thank you too. I thank you always for coming in and taking the time to come in to say counsel and remind us what our priorities are. It matters a lot, and it is very, personally, very moving that you make this incredible effort to come here. So I did want to share a little bit, it doesn't excuse anything that's going on at Kensington, you know, KHSA, but Councilman Squillo, myself, did go down and meet with a number of the young students to talk a little bit about what this whole transition was going on. We met without the district in part because we wanted to have more, you know, private conversation about direction. We did not have parents at the meeting, so I'll just be clear about that. And, you know, we did, the transfer over from a principal to the next principal is a really complicated process. I mean, it shouldn't be as complicated as it is, but for you to push in as a parent from the outside and be able to demand a place at the table to interview and review the next principal is not something that's enshrined in school district policy. It should be, in my opinion, it should be a clear process. I think principals should come before the broader parent body, should, you know, have an introductory set of groups, but we don't have that. So we did talk a little bit about how to do that when there's no process in place, and happy to kind of sit down and talk with you as well about that. But I, I do want to ask you some of the same questions that I asked Ms. Campbell, who was at Cook. So Kensington, KHSA is a turnaround school now. And I want to know, has the district, you are an active parent, I know you are, I know you care deeply, you come down here. So how many times has the district in this coming year for turnaround, let, met with you- in this, uh, coming year, uh, for turnaround, let, met with you, or held public or parent meetings to inform what the process is about turnaround, and to allow you a forum to air your concerns about the priorities you wanna see happen?
At the school, it's settled up?
Yes.
From the district level?
Yes, from the district.
No, no.
And how many times have you met with Eric Bakotes, who's the superintendent of the turnaround schools, where he's had some kind of a meeting to inform parents about the process moving forward, and offer you opportunities to weigh in on your personal priorities?
No.
So, that's a big concern, I didn't say that as clearly with, uh, Ms. Campbell, but I know that's something I would love for you to share with Ms. Campbell Oates, who's here, who's been a parent advocate.
Right.
But it's something I'd like to follow up with you on, because it's a very serious concern.
No problem.
Yeah.
Because my, my, my situation is this, I, I mean, I understand that you can't be at the table for every, every, you know, every process within it, but it, like you said, that it has to be a process, because you have taxpayers that, that's paying, paying, go to work every day, paying salaries within, within the district. And, you know, the, when you have poor, poor children with, and we have a, a high poor rate in the city of children and, and families, and public education is the main source of, of getting to successful levels. So, you know, they, they have to look at it as, as being the quintessential aspect of giving all the resources that every school needs, because when you're closing schools, how can you close a school but then not give it the resources to balance out whether or not it's gonna be successful, or it fails? I can't say that a school is gonna fail, but I'm pulling resources at the same time. So, so, all I want them to do is, is be mindful that you can't use it as a bureaucratic situation and say, "Well, we're gonna do this, but then we want you to go along with the, with the program." It has to be a situation of, and they have to put it in a policy of, I, I understand that you say that, that it wasn't in the policy, but it sh- it, it should have been a mandate within the policy already.
I agree.
Because the, the aspect is, why should City Council have to tell them that it has to be within the policy? That should be, now I mean, a, a, an unequivocal, I already understand that and, and know that, you're dealing with pub, children from the public. So, you have to, black and brown children are the highest rated failing aspect of anything in education, but we're the highest rate in the jail system. And, and, and the problem is, that needs to be reversed, we need to be the lowest in the jail system, and the highest in academics. But, but then, but then, when, when we are highly academic, we don't really get the, we don't really get recognized for that. Very seldom do we do, we do, but not on the aspect of when you're talking about incarceration.
I appreciate you, and, you know, again, I wanna thank you for all the work you do to show that parents in this city, and especially parents of our black and brown youth, care deeply about the quality of education.
And I thank you too.
Yeah, no, I, it's, it's so important to see you everywhere, really pushing on that. The, the one thing that I wanna stress, and one of the reasons why I wanna follow up with you after this, is, um, because it should be understood that the turnaround of any school, but especially our city high schools, is not a science, it's not like a recipe or a formula. It's actually very unknown, and it depends a lot on parental engagement, on vision, on responsiveness to past practices that have gone on around race and dynamics. So, you can't simply take a dysfunctional, underfunded school that has had a history around racism and other types of issues, that, and just expect to apply a cookie cutter formula and make it turn around.
Oh, no, I, I never, yeah.
And so, one of the things that I think is so important for us working together, and what I feel very passionately about, is that the district has to engage the parent community.
Right.
You have to be responsive to the parent, the teacher, and the student communities themselves, and if the district is not meeting with you about its vision for turnaround, we are not gonna be able to turn around that school. It's a big vision, it's not a top-down approach, it's a collaborative vision, so.
Because the, the problem also too is, when you remove a principal that's already showing success, and then you change, it changed the dynamics of the school, how do you then say, "Well, we're gonna keep it at the same level that it is now"? That's gonna be very hard. It's already hard to, to turn it around, to make it a success. And so, when Mr. Williams already did that, then you're gonna turn it around, then you're gonna say, "Okay, we, we got you to a certain level, we're not gonna keep you there, then we're gonna snatch your principal, we're gonna put it in there with somebody else, but you don't know what you're getting".
That's right, we agree, and I want us to work on a better path forward, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Next, identify yourself again for us.
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. Good morning, uh, good afternoon, my name is Kathy Fisher, and I'm the Policy Director at the Greater Philadelphia Coalition Against Hunger. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and special thanks to Councilwoman Ginn for your leadership on school breakfast, and to Councilwoman Blackwell for her leadership on this, uh, spring break meals pilot that was carried out by Philly Parks and Rec in April. You're well aware of Philadelphia's high rates of child poverty and child food insecurity. These challenges place far too many Philadelphia students at high risk for long-term health conditions, as well as at an educational disadvantage. Students facing hunger are more likely to miss school, repeat a grade, need special education services, and have behavioral issues that may lead to suspension. That is why we are thrilled that Dr. Height, in his testimony to you last week, committed to improving access to school breakfast by making breakfast part of the day at currently underperforming schools. Um, I'm here today to ask you to keep him to his word. For too long, the decision of how and when to serve breakfast has been left to individual schools, and because of this, many students have not had meaningful access to this valuable resource. Based on data from October through March of this school year, while nearly 40 district schools reach over 70% of students with breakfast each day, the vast majority of schools are reaching less than half of their students, and this includes 79 schools that are reaching less than 1 in 3. Attached to my testimony, I've provided details of school breakfast participation by council district. This way, each of you can see how the schools in your district perform and monitor future improvements. You know the schools in your community, and of course, there are differences. Providing breakfast in an elementary setting is far different than engaging teens. Schools without a full-service kitchen are different than those that provide pre-plated meals, and those with limited cafeteria space or staffing shortages have additional challenges to overcome. But in the end, the fact is that the schools that are reaching 70, 80, even 90% of their students with school breakfast have implemented successful systems, because they understand that school breakfast helps their students reach educational goals. Change is hard, but that is exactly what schools with low breakfast performance must do. They can assess what breakfast model will work in their school, discuss a plan with food services to pilot a new approach, and learn from their peers at schools that reach the vast majority of their students. Philadelphia students deserve all the support they can get, and school breakfast is one of them. As a city, we must continue to make progress and make sure all students have equal access to nutritious breakfast each school day, so that they are ready to learn and thrive. So, I thank council very much for their support of the breakfast program.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Ginn.
Thank you so much, um, Ms. Fisher, for all the work that you did championing healthy, um, and nutritionist, uh, meals in schools, and tackling hunger, which is something that I think, as we start to approach summer, um, becomes a very, very lived reality for a lot of our families and communities. Um, I wanna thank you especially for helping win a commitment from the superintendent. Do you feel like there's a particular, um, is, is there anything further that you think is important for us to do as a community, as a council, as a coalition, to make sure that that comes to fruition?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be important to ask the district to kind of provide a plan, cuz it's, you know, it's unrealistic to think every school in September is gonna switch its model and have the resources it needs to learn these new approaches, so I would just ask that food services have to develop a plan to, to show kind of incremental change, even if they have to roll it out over a two- or three-year period. I do, you know, I understand that resources are always tight when you're talking about the district, and I think ha- them having a real plan would help. I also think, um, there's a lot of, there are a lot of people in communities who focus on when their child doesn't like the meal that day, or, you know, and there are issues with quality, but I think helping to educate parents about the fact that the district has made some changes, and that they are, oh, they're always doing taste tests with students, they're changing the menus as they can with the, the different providers, and really pushing for that to continue, cuz as more kids eat breakfast, there'll be more resources, and that should go back into the meal to improve quality. So, again, because resources are not infinite, those resources that do come in, um, because of more meals being served should go right back into quality.
And do you feel there should be some, like, transparency around reporting of breakfast participation rates per school?
Um, uh, the district is now posting, uh, data on its website, on the food services, and that's new, that I think is because people have been pushing. Um, so, yeah, I think they should continue to do that, and at budget hearings next year, they can report on who's improved and who hasn't.
Are they doing it on a monthly basis, or?
Uh, I'm not sure how often they do it, they, they just posted them maybe two months ago, and I didn't look to see if they did like a monthly update, but they do have to, um, submit meal claims to PDE monthly, so it's, it's not, you know, unrealistic to ask them to, to, on a monthly basis, provide new numbers.
Okay, that's understood. And maybe Councilwoman Blackwell, if we could maybe work together about making sure that, uh, reaching out to the district to see about what the plan is, to ensure that each school has, uh, either a grab-and-go plan, or breakfast-in-the-classroom type of plan, to ensure that breakfast participation reaches appropriate rates.
Yes.
I'd love to do that with you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Julie Krung here, or is it Julie King, maybe? Okay. All right, so Tiffany Green, Maria Ortiz, and Betty Buford, and also Lori Mazer.
Thank you, ladies.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman, how are you?
Great. Please identify yourself for the record and begin in any order.
Oh, Tiffany Green, Say Smith School Committee. I'm gonna speak first, okay?
Yeah.
At first, I just wanna say, it was very disappointing to have to hear Jerry Johns practically convincing people to do a contract for the city, I mean, for the teachers, it's, it's just really heartfelt, and it's really saddening and disappointing to hear that. After five years, no contract, and with all the changes going forth in the commu- in the communities, uh, upscaling going on, I would think that, you know, just financially, they would want to do a contract for the teachers, so I just wanted to make that note. I'm here to speak on behalf of Say Smith School Committee, and our school, Smith School, is one of the five schools that is being, is proposed to be sold to a market-rate developer who plans to put 46 condominiums inside the schools.
Where is that location?
Down in Point Breeze, at 19th and Wharton. And the other schools, I think it's Fulton, um, Germantown High, Carroll, and Ver Abigail. So, these are key schools in key areas. The concern we have at this particular point is that it seems that we, we're not getting support from City Council to try to stop this sale, uh, regarding the, to the developer. And, and the thing about it is, is that, let me just point out some facts. Number one, if this sale goes through, this would make the school district of Philadelphia one of the largest gentifiers in the city. How can the school district become a gentifier by selling schools to a developer who's gonna put condominiums in a, in, in a community where many of their poor, low-income students and their families reside? This is just unbelievable to allow this to happen, okay? I mean, if you talk about trauma, trauma, there, there's this whole push about trauma on the students, uh, uh, Councilwoman, and if you talk about trauma, what's more trauma than a poor student hearing their parents crying on the phone to parents, saying that rents are increasing, we're gonna have to move, you're gonna have to loo- you're not gonna move away? They're like, "I don't wanna move away from my friends, I don't wanna move away from my school, I mean, I like my community, why do we have to go, mommy"? The thing about it is, is that you have to explain to the child while he's moving that the school district has actually sold their school to a developer. That does not make, that doesn't even sound right, okay? So, I think that we need to have a solution, and I spoke with one of your colleagues, and we talked about, he was talking about, we need a solution. Well, one of the solutions that we think City Council can do immediately, in fact, we're asking that the bill be submitted in next week, is change the zoning classifications of the schools. Why are the schools RM1, which gives by-right privileges, over the counter to build market-rate housing without any kind of community support, community zoning, or anything at that particular point?
You said, why are they changed?
Changed the cla- the zoning classifications of the schools. I mean, you have CA1, which means, uh, libraries, recreations, or whatever, doesn't include any kind of residential, or you can make it, whereas, there's a couple other zoning classifications you can look into, where you change it, where it's for public benefit only, recreations, like I said, or whatever, but it would require a zoning process, it would also give City Council the power to have input in their district, alone, as well, regarding the school closing, so it doesn't matter, if the school district wants to sell a building, you would be able to have some input and say, "I, I know my three minutes are up, but real quick, the thing about it is, is that we're asking City Council to help us with saving our school and not selling, especially Germantown High, which is a jewel, for a hundred, for $100,000 or $200,000? We were up there meeting with Germantown High, and some of the people in the area had very good, they had Temple students do a project, and the, the ideas were wonderful, you know, about making, breaking the school up and having part school, part recreation, or whatever, or maybe having, uh, certain areas where people can have like little incubator jo- uh, companies inside. They had all kinds of wonderful ideas, and we feel that we might be able to piggyback off of that too. So, just to, just to close up, we're asking City Council to help to change, put in the, change the zoning classification on the schools, so that we, the community can have input on what goes into those schools, and it's not over-the-counter permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ginn.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Betty Buford, and I'm here to ask for your help. I lived in Point Breeze neighborhood for over 20 years. When I first moved to Point Breeze, there was a lovely school across the street from my house, my son went, my son attended that school. Smith School was closed in 2013, and, and my neighbors and I have been fighting to keep the building of the school ever since. We have testified at every SRC meeting, and asked that the sale be reviewed and pulled off the table. It's a bad deal. The SRC has admitted it, the SRC has admitted a bad, a bad deal. Even, mm, 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 even some of the city councils have admitted it's a bad deal. We have contacted all, we have contacted all of you and met with councilperson Jim Johnson and Green, but nothing has changed, so let's stop this bad deal. You just heard testi- you just heard testimony a month ago about the eviction crisis in our city. The school district has a meeting, the school district had a meeting a few weeks ago about overcrowding in South Philly public schools. Last week, there was a, there was an arson in our neighborhood related to rapid gentification. The last thing our neighborhood needs is more market-rate houses, it is so obvious to me, and my neighbors, and it should be to you. There, there must be a better way. Help us fight to keep this, to keep this school a school. Demand that the school district break the contract with the developer. Ask for a feasibility study. Ask my neighbors what our neighborhood needs. I promise you, one will say, forty, one will say, 45 new condos? Wait a minute, I promise you, no one will say 45 new condos. How can you help us? Because we need your help, Say Smith School. And we also have a campaign that's set, the community, Say Smith Community has a campaign, "Education, Not Gentification".
Thank you, Mother, thank you, Ms. Buford.
Good, good afternoon, my name is Maria Ortiz, and I've been all over different states, went and advocating for schools of education. I'm here today to talk about Smith School, that has been unjustly closed. My grandchildren went to Smith School in 2013, then they had to transfer to another school. I had one grandchild, was on the bus for four hours in the morning before she hit school. When she gets to school, breakfast is over, she has to go straight to class. I live in a gentified area where high-end housing, where, where I, where high-end housing is. The move of long-term resident, the move for long-term resident is not good now. Not only they move low-income seniors and working-class people, you have one of the most terrible system in the world. We need educators to educate our children, not teachers moving, not students going to other classes or other schools where it's overcrowded. other classes or other schools where it's overcrowded. Smith School is the essential school in our community. We need this school open now, not tomorrow, now. When being in a gentified area, we have teachers. Teachers, I have one teacher that's leaving and going to New Mexico to get a job with her, with her child. I have two, three more teachers that live in the community that's saying, why can't Smith School be open? We've been fighting this for the last, since 2011. We, we even, we even met with Dr. Height. Dr. Height, he just looked at you. Just like the man said in the previous, Dr. Height is a joke. He is really a joke. We, where is the pay for the teachers? Why are children bringing things to school, to supplies to school when 440, that big building they rented, they could downsize it and put it, a smaller building and have funding for the schools? Not only that, the CEOs of the school district, Dr. Height, need to give back $1,000 out of each pay when every school start closing. Not only that, there need to be some solution because this is crazy. Every child has a right to education, every child has the right to learn, every child has the right to be a professor, a doctor, and see their dream come true. And it's so sad that our councilperson doesn't see this. I see this because I have, like I said, that child that travels four hours up, four hours back, sometimes six to eight hours. We need neighborhood schools. Neighborhood children should not have to travel to the main line, to Overbrook, or somewhere else. If they put this school back, that would take off the overcrowding of other properties of child school, authors, and other schools. We need the school open today, and we're asking council to make the changes and help us open this school and stop sitting on their butts. And we deserve, even though we're not high-end people, low-class, working-class, and I pay full tax, I don't get homestead, I don't get loop, I deserve something because I'm a grandmother. Thank you, have a nice day.
You better get whatever you can, too.
Say Smith School.
Thank you, thank you. Absolutely. Everybody deserves equal treatment. Thank you very much. Please, the next speaker. Thank you. Please identify yourself.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Lori Mazer, and I'm a very, very proud public school parent. And actually, I'm sorry that Mr. Squill, Councilman Squill is not here because my school is in his district. And I just want to say that as a public school parent, I fully understand there are a lot of problems in our public school that need attention, but I believe a critical priority has to be protecting the health and safety and well-being of our children in our school. If this isn't accomplished, then nothing else will work. If we don't have a safe and healthy environment for our kids, how can we expect them to learn? To figure out exactly what to do and where and how much money should be spent also requires that we as parents, as school staff, as public stakeholders, have real access to information and have a substantive and meaningful voice in helping to establish priorities and approaches for school improvement. The situation at our school, at the school that my son attends, at Jackson, which I'll provide details about in a minute, included leaking roofs, problems with the heating and cooling. And these issues have had significant consequential impacts on learning, on student and staff health, and on sustainable costs. I've also come to know that these kind of problems and impacts, through the amazing work of Parents United for Public Education, are found throughout all of our schools, and a lot of schools have it way worse than Jackson. That heating, ventilation leaks, mold, and other problems are widespread across our district. At Jackson, like many others, we have children and staff with asthma who are directly impacted by moisture, dampness, and mold, as well as heat and humidity, all conditions that can be, can exacerbate asthma. At Andrew Jackson, we recently suffered two significant facilities failure. Our beloved library ceiling, which we spent a lot of time and energy making sure had books and had a library, and when the school district wasn't providing, collapsed. An electrical arcing of the electrical system resulted in a partial blackout during instructional time. These things are unacceptable. This is not the way to run a school, and these are small potatoes compared to what's going on at the rest of our schools. And I'm here to say that we must make protecting our students' and staff health a priority as we determine what needs to be done. I also want to say that as a parent who advocates and does a lot of work in our community to try and raise funds for our school, I refuse to participate and refuse to accept that the district puts it on me to fundraise for our school and that individual parents are responsible for their schools. I am doing my job as a parent, we are all doing our job as a parent. Our staff are doing their jobs, our teachers are doing their jobs, our children are doing their jobs. I need the district to do their job. I need the district to make schools safe and healthy for all students. I don't want to be out there with a hustle trying to get money for my school and, and my neighbors not having what they need. We need a standard that the district adheres to. And I would just applaud council who have signed on with the Coalition as part of the Philadelphia Healthy Schools Initiative, and I would ask everyone to make this a priority because without a safe and healthy learning environment, we can't even begin to fix the other problems in our educational system.
Thank you very much. So we've heard about Jackson, about Smith, and what was the other school, and Cook? Yes, thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to read the next panel, please.
Gail Silver, Karen Panicki, Barbara Dow, Dow? We'll call her later then. Eileen Duffy?
Later.
Okay. Linda Rubin?
Yeah.
Welcome, always a pleasure. Please identify yourself and begin your testimony.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Gail Silver. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, even better. As I said, my name is Gail Silver, and I am a former child advocate lawyer with the Defender Association, and I am a yoga and mindfulness educator who has been working in the Philadelphia public schools, providing yoga and mindfulness services and other restorative practices since 2003. I'm also an author of several children's books that teach children how to navigate the difficult terrain of difficult emotions and difficult circumstances that can arise in school through mindfulness practice. I'm here today because I want to share with you, I'm not sure if I had shared this, but we've been in over 85 schools within the district since 2003 when we began doing this work. And I'm here today because I want to talk a little bit about the restorative practices and their impact on the students, the positive impact that we've been able to see over the years, but to also speak to the need, the need for sustainable programming to be schoolwide and available to the teachers. The teachers in the schools need to be able to, they need to be equipped with the tools to keep these mindfulness practices fluid and available to students during the school day after they return from classes with the service providers. If we want to see climate change in the classroom, we can't expect our teachers to do this, to make something out of nothing. So while we're educating students, we also want to be supporting the teachers to reduce their job stress and to create an environment that can allow the compassion and the kindness and the mindfulness and the academic achievement and academic well-being that we know comes from these, from these teachings to be available. I'd like to highlight the impact by sharing a story with you. I know it's, we're sort of after lunch and I don't have very much time, hopefully I will get through this. But I'd like to take you back to 2003, when I taught my very first yoga and mindfulness class at the, what was then the Fitzsimons Middle School. I was teaching to a group of sixth to eighth grade girls, and when I arrived at the school, I, I had to pass through two physical altercations, a few different policemen, before I could get to the gym where we would have our class. And I know this doesn't come as a surprise to any of you. In the room where we would be teaching, which was the gym, the gymnasium, there was a basketball, an after-school basketball club playing basketball, and on the other side of the gym, there was a dance club with a boombox going. And this was the environment that I was there to provide yoga and mindfulness education in. For any of you who have ever taken a yoga or mindfulness class, you may know that that's not an optimal environment for introducing sixth-grade students to yoga and mindfulness. I had to project my voice louder than anyone would want to at any time to be heard in teaching a yoga and mindfulness class. And about, about halfway through the class, I really felt the bottom drop out. Nothing awful happened, but that was the moment when I questioned my career change, when I questioned whether I was reaching any of these students. After class, I put my bag on my shoulder and I walked to my car. And I was about, I was about halfway to the car when I felt someone behind me. And I stopped and I turned, and lo and behold, it was a girl from the class. She was trying to catch up with me. And she said, can I walk with you to your car? And I said, of course. And we talked and we chatted, and she came with me to my car every day for the next six to eight weeks. And we talked each week, and I don't remember what we talked about each week, but I do remember the very first thing she said to me when she caught my attention. She said, "I wish you were here every day. When you're here, it's quiet, and we can learn." And those words may have, may have changed the shape of what I did from those moments forward because it allowed me to keep going forward and know that I was doing good work and reaching at least, at least one child. Over, may I have another moment to wrap up? Thank you. Over the next, over the next 15 years, I would hear other comments from other children along the lines of, "Yoga calms my anger down. When I breathe out, it makes the bad things go away. Yoga helps me come to my safe place. It helps me concentrate on my work." You might wonder, if our work has been so well-received and we've been doing this kind of work together with other organizations around the city for so many years, why we need these restorative practices that Dr. Height testified about on May 10? And I think the answer is probably apparent to all of us, but it's worth restating and it bears restating. And that is that these practices done in small pieces with small groups for short periods of time will not have the impact that sustainable schoolwide programming can have when it's available to the teachers to integrate into their classrooms during the school day and when it's available to all students in the school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very interesting testimony. Thank you. Who would like to go next?
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Rubin. I'm a re, excuse me, I'm a retired school counselor and a member of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools. I am a school counselor who retired after 38 years, all served in one school in South Philadelphia, Deneul and Fell, and three previous years teaching at Walton Elementary at 27th and Huntington Streets, which I love.
What was your last school?
Walton Elementary. It's been closed, but it was Walton Elementary School, 27th and Huntington. I student taught there, taught there, it was, I was thrilled, and the only reason I left was because I became a counselor. Consistently, consistency and stability matters for educators, students, families, and communities. But what path has our school district taken? Creating a very uneven school system where some schools can raise money for staff, equipment, trips, while in the neediest schools, existing staff are forced out to make way for new staff with little to no knowledge of the neighborhood, children, or even each other. But the appearance of change while exerting control has been accomplished. The SRC and district blame PFT and CASA staff and deny them contracts and resources to enable them to do their jobs. Conversely, the SRC is pouring money into a host of outside contractors like Cambridge Inc., a global corporation, to come in and identify the problems of what the school district had dubbed "priority schools" after a couple of visits, a very few short observations in classrooms, and some brief meetings with and surveys of parents. Now this SRC is seeking to outsource teacher preparation programs to unaccredited corporate models like Relay, who use scripted training programs, and principal programs like Philly Plus, where not even school law is taught. The shift is being made to privatize the operations of our schools and hiring the cheapest labor we can get, regardless of the quality or how few years they stay. Charter schools have been overtaken from their original design for educational innovation by corporate entities who hide behind supposed nonprofit companies. But make no mistake, hedge funders don't invest in nonprofits for nothing. We can't even seem to hold non-performing charter schools to account, even when their academic progress is on a downward trend for three to five years. At the last SRC meeting, Michael Karp defended Belmont Charter's lack of academic progress on the high poverty level of its students. Well, haven't charters touted as their reason for being that they can do better with these students? If they can't, why are they allowed to continue renewal after renewal after renewal? At a, at a new charter application hearing this year, KIP CEO Mark Manila was asked by Hearing Officer Allison Peterson why KIP was applying to open a new school instead of concentrating on fixing an existing non-performing KIP school. He replied, "With every school, we're getting better. We're able to increase our support staff. That helps." Huh? And my last comment is, at last week's hearing, Councilwoman Blackwell, you correctly chastised Superintendent Height when he absurdly said the principals are choosing not to have librarians when he, when you said, "You're making their decisions for them based on your funding." Thank you for pointing out that Hobson's Choice, that schools are being given every day. I'm imploring city council to do its due diligence during the school year, not just at budget time, to learn, to learn about what the SRC and district are doing behind their pretty words. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Haber. Always a pleasure.
Thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, and thank you to Councilwoman Jim. I'm hoping we'll see some more council people later. My name is Lisa Haber. I'm a retired Philadelphia school teacher. My children graduated from public schools. I'm one of the co-founders of the Alliance for Philadelphia Public Schools. Our members attend and testify at all action and policy committee meetings of the SRC. We report on those meetings, we analyze the resolutions to be voted on. We, as I said, we were here last week, and we heard a lot of comments from Dr. Height and his administration, and I think some of those things really need to be answered because it's not news to anybody that this school district needs more money. What we look at is, how is the school district spending that money? You know, as Linda said, on really bad programs like Relay Graduate. One thing that Dr. Height, well, two things. First, he said, "We want to have good schools close to where children live." And then a couple minutes later, he repeated what he had said before, that his plan is to close three neighborhood schools a year for at least the next five years. I don't know how that, excuse me, I don't know how that makes sense. At the same time, keeping open what are clearly, according to school district data, clearly substandard charter schools. It, it seems that the decisions about the future of our public schools are based on reports by, as Linda said, the Cambridge Group, there's the Afton Corporation, the Boston Consulting Group, the Philadelphia School Partnership. It seems that more and more, everyone except your constituents, the parents, students, and community members are really having a say on the future of our public schools. Last year, the SRC approved initial spending 10, 10 million for blended learning, which puts students in front of computers for a significant part of the day. As we pointed out in our testimony, there's no credible research that shows that this kind of program increases student learning. Our children don't need more time to learn, you know, to be in front of a screen. They need more time to learn from qualified teachers. They have to have more social interaction, not less social interaction. The Height administration, each year, creates a new category of schools nominally to turn those schools around. Priority schools, transformation schools, redesign schools, Renaissance schools, these things that are referred to as turnarounds. But the, the main tactic of those turnarounds is, is to get rid of most of the faculty. At the same time that Dr. Height talked about dealing with student trauma, moving most of the faculty out of the school and having kids come back the next year and seeing very few feet, faces that they recognize, in my opinion, inflicts trauma on students. You can't turn around and say, let's put a Band-Aid on the trauma that we have inflicted. And I want to also thank you, Councilwoman Blackwell, and Councilman Talvemberger for talking about school libraries. You really cannot have a, a public school without a school library, and we're going to be working on getting those libraries back, and we look forward to talking to you about that. Thank you.
Thank you, and we certainly support you. Thank you, and we certainly support you. We'll do our part. We're finally getting the Lucian Blackwell Library. We opened on the twentieth.
Lucian, the solution.
That's right. Lucian with the solution. Thank you. Thank you, ladies all.
Karen Pinicky? Barbara Dowdall?
She gave me an estimated time limit. She should be about five minutes. I know our Philadelphia is just working on Sunday, so.
Okay. Is Erin Levinson here by chance? Or Erin Levinson? Or William Jackson? No?
This is our entire list. We have, is there anyone else here we haven't called who's come in who would like to testify? Well, we'll wait five minutes for the individual you mentioned, Ms. Haber. We'll see if they come in. And we are asking the school district to note that the schools mentioned today needing help, physical help, were Cook, Smith, and Jackson. And somebody add on if I missed a school. Who? Kensington. Okay.
We also talked about, you know, there are nineteen schools in turnaround, and I think, given the fact that two parents from those schools have said that they haven't had any meetings at all about their turnaround plans, or there's no engagement, you know, from the office, it would probably be worth asking about the other nineteen schools, what their parent engagement or community engagement practice is for the turnaround outreach.
Thank you. So maybe you can get back to us with, with the plans for turnaround and the schools that are so designated turnaround schools, nineteen schools. Thank you. Yes, thank you for coming. We want you to know we held up this entire hearing just for you. So you are very special, and I'm sure we're going to get good testimony. So welcome, come forward, identify yourself for the record, and begin, and thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, here we go. Barbara McDowdall, I'm a resident of Germantown, a graduate of Philadelphia Public Schools. Good afternoon, members of City Council Education Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on the proposed school district of Philadelphia budget for 2017, 2018. Rather than speak about the school district's budget for one year, I would like to address overarching issues of budget priorities in general, how they are set and by whom. As testimony from last week's hearing here by school district officials indicates, all power for budget decisions rests, and has been for fifteen years, with the five appointed members of the School Reform Commission and their superintendent. Although generally acknowledged that those in power are very willing to come and testify here, especially in times when there is a request for additional monies, the power of City Council members to have influence over budgetary decisions appears to be ceremonial at best. I would argue, especially in light of recent research by the Public Interest Law Center of Philadelphia on the matter of school funding sources, where the state provides thirty-four percent, the city almost sixty percent, that City Council and the mayor too have both the right to know and the responsibility to direct how funds are allocated. In the matter of school libraries and instrumental music, for example, we as a metropolitan community, determined to provide high-quality education for every student, could and should insist that these resources be provided in every school, not as part of a list of options determined by the principal. I attached here two articles, one written by me about school libraries several years ago, and one appearing in Newsworks today about instrumental music. And I'll just add that in the days when there was music in every school in Philadelphia, starting in first grade on up, we sent graduates of our schools to symphony orchestras. The first African-American principal harpist of the Boston Symphony, Anne Hobson-Pilot, Booker Row violinist in the Philadelphia Orchestra, and so on. So we don't really know where the talented children will be. They could be in absolutely any school, and it's also part of what gives you joy in life. And so the, the piece in Newsworks today talked about the racial makeup of schools, and if there are more black students, you're less likely to have music, instrumental music. So in nineteen, yeah, Roosevelt Junior High in the fifty-eight, I got a bassoon, and then still playing fifty years later. All right, thank you.
Karen Pinkney?
And thank you very much for that important testimony. Roosevelt Junior High is mine. After this last individual, I think, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Otherwise, we're going to recess. And we thank you all. I thank my staff. I thank the president's folks for keeping us together, and we thank our stenographer as well. Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi. Feel free to identify yourself and begin your testimony. You are our last individual.
Hi, my name is Karen Pinkney.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify about the importance of financial education and the need for permanent mandatory core courses for children in grades K through twelve. My name is Karen Pinkney, and I, I am advocating for all the children in the city of Philadelphia and for their financial education and future economic success. I am a lifelong resident of Philadelphia and attended the city's public schools myself. I have witnessed firsthand the devastating impacts of the lack of financial education, which is the reason, one of the reasons why I'm here today. I am the founder of the Future Counts Financial Education Program. Excuse me. The primary mission of my organization is to educate and empower kids as well as their parents in financial education.
Have you spoke with Councilman Dom?
No, I haven't.
I know if he's listening, you should really turn it on. This is your stuff, Councilman.
Okay, very good, very good.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Currently, there are seventeen states in the United States that have mandatory financial education courses for students in K through twelve. However, in the state of Pennsylvania, we lag behind in passing a mandate to teach personal finance classes to highs, to even high school students. Through this testimony, I would like to respectfully request the support and a sense of urgency on the part of our state, federal, and local leaders. I strongly believe that it is critically important to provide our children with a basic understanding of financial concepts. Teaching our children the skill set is necessary in helping them establish a strong foundation for economic success and for security for their lives. This is especially true for their lives after high school. Many college students are taking out increasingly large student loans to pay for their education. In fact, student loan debt in our country exceeds credit card debt. Mistakes managing money in their early years, in, in, I'm sorry, mistakes in their, managing money in their early years of adulthood can have devastating long-term consequences on their ability to buy their first home, their ability to buy a car, their ability to support their family, their ability to save for retirement. The lack of financial education has an impact on practically everything. Unfortunately, many of our high school graduates are entering college or the workforce completely unarmed with just the basic knowledge and basic skills they need to manage their personal finances effectively. So we know there are so many benefits to teaching our kids financial literacy. I believe that not providing our children with core personal finance courses is a form of child abuse. Making financial education a core requirement for students K through twelve should be a priority for all of us. Accelerating these efforts will provide students an unprecedented opportunity to give children, as well as their parents, the power to become, to become the most informed savers and investors of previous generations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Obviously, you're very passionate. Child abuse, that's, I guess that's why the rest of us are just broke. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to testify or make a comment? We do thank you. We thank you all. Is there any, do you have any other names, we ask the clerk? We have no, no other speakers? Then again, as I've said, we want to thank everybody. We have no other folks who want to testify today, so our committee will stand in recess until Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, 2017, at 1:00 p.m., at which time we'll reconvene here in Room 400, City Hall. Thank you all very much.